This conference will now be recorded.
I would like to call this meeting of the Port Orford Planning Commission, August 13th, 2024, to order. I'm going to call. We have, I'd just like to say we have a new commissioner, Commissioner Boydson.
Hello? Glad to be here.
Welcome.
Commissioner Head.
Here.
Commissioner Lovendall.
Here.
Commissioner Lawton?
Here.
And Commissioner Thielen is here. We have a full comportment here. And under item two, Chair comments, I'd just like to welcome Commissioner Boydson for stepping up to do some really good work. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Yeah. Um, we have a really huge agenda today and I'm going to try to stay, keep the ball rolling and I hope we all do. So, without further ado, I'm going to go to number three minutes for July 8th meeting, pages two to four of our, of our packet here. Are there any additions or corrections, comments on the, on the minutes? Nope. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as given.
Commissioner Head, I move to approve the minutes as written.
Commissioner Lovendall, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's have the vote. Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Head?
Yes.
Commissioner Boydson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovendall?
Yes.
Commissioner Thielen is yes. Okay, welcoming of Jerry Boydson as Commissioner. Would anybody like to say anything besides me about Commissioner Boydson? Or about yourself?
Uh, well, I was usually on that side of the fence, talking to people on this side of the fence. I've been to a few Planning Commission meetings in Albany and Corales and Benton County and such, but, so no, I just feel like this will be a good experience.
Well, welcome.
To have you.
Thank you.
Good to have you. It's good to have a full commission.
Do you, do you know everybody?
I don't know.
Carol.
Carol.
Commissioner Lawton, he said he didn't know you, so you.
Oh, you can.
Commissioner Lawton, this is Commissioner Boydson.
Nice to meet you.
I'm rather new to the commission, I think. I don't think I've been here a year yet.
A few months.
Mm-hmm. So, I'm still learning myself.
So, you're not the newbie anymore?
I know, that's pretty cool.
Awesome. All right, well, again, welcome. Five, we've got public comments on the agenda items only if there are any, if there's anyone online that has comments about the conditional use permit, just save those until we open up the hearing, but if there's, anyone else has something to say about anything else on the agenda, this is your chance to do it.
I'm not seeing any comment online.
Okay. Well, then, let's move on to the public hearing. Public hearing, conditional use permit 24-02, Ray's Bottle Drop, which is pages five through six, plus A, B, and C attachments. This will be a formal hearing, so I'm going to, I guess I'm going to call this hearing to order at 5:35. This is a public hearing for conditional use permit 24-02, Ray's Bottle Drop. And I have a little script that I'm going to read here to just make sure we're all square with the law. We're all volunteers appointed by the Port Orford City Council. We can't vary or change the law as part of this hearing. We're required to base our decisions on the law that exists when the application was filed. Do any members of the Planning Commission have any potential conflicts such as family, financial, or business relationship with any of the applicants or with regard to the land in question?
No. No.
See, a bunch of no's. Okay. Have any Planning Commissioners discussed the application with any of the applicants? Or have any independent knowledge of facts, such as a visit to the site? If you do, you need to disclose the substance of the contact. Yeah, or if you have any knowledge of relevant facts, independent knowledge of relevant facts, please summarize the facts. So, if, if anybody's discussed anything.
I talked briefly to Dave Bassett about the project. I'm not sure if he's one of the applicants, but he brought this application to the Rotary and made, sort of made an announcement, and then we talked briefly about it, but it didn't get a lot of context for the project, and I don't know if he's involved. Seems to be just a proponent.
He's not on the paperwork.
Okay. That's it.
He was one of the people who was contacted because he owns a property within 100 feet of the location, so he was given notice of the hearing.
I see, okay, thanks. Yep, that's it.
Okay. Anyone else?
I did do a drive-by today and visited the site and, um, I confess, I was there.
Okay.
I've been to Ray's.
Yeah, same.
Once or twice myself.
I live right up the street, so I checked it out as well.
That's it.
Okay, so if anyone has an issue they want to raise about this conditional use permit, I have to say that if you'd fail to raise it at this point, it can't be raised upon appeal, so what happens in this meeting is, is pretty, is, is legal information that will just carry on down the line. Citizens may provide verbal testimony online or be here. I don't see anyone here. If, if we decide that the record is to remain open for a time period, if we feel that there needs to be more information, then written evidence and documents may be submitted in accordance with the instructions provided at the public hearing. So, so if, if we keep the hearing open, more documents can be submitted and considered if, if the meeting is to be continued to another date. Procedures of the public hearing, the items will be considered one at a time in the order listed on the agenda. The staff report will give a, a report first. The chair will start. So, I will ask the staff to summarize the written staff report. The proponents or applicants will testify first, and anyone in favor of the conditional use permit. And we can also ask questions of the proponents. Opponents will testify second. And then there can be questions, we can ask the staff questions throughout the hearing until the record closes. The proponent or applicant can speak last after, if there's, like, someone is against it, then the applicant can speak after that. Then I will close the public hear, portion of the hearing, and then we'll deliberate on what to do. During the deliberations, the Planning Commission may reopen the public portion if necessary to receive additional evidence before making a decision. That's basically it. So, we have a proponent here, I believe, for the, for the, and, so please, make, sir, and, so please state your name and your address and, and go ahead and speak.
Okay, my name's Robert Taylor and my address is 3033 Northeast 160th Drive in Portland, Oregon. 97230 is the zip. You're kind of breaking up, so I didn't know if there was any other questions in there.
I didn't catch that. Can you repeat that, please?
My name is Robert Taylor. And.
Yes, we.
My address is, okay.
We got that.
Just the, the last part that you said after your name and address.
You guys break up, or, I'm, it's breaking up just a little bit, so I didn't hear the whole question.
Did you hear Commissioner Thielen say, "Make your case"?
Okay, there, no, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I think this is where we talk about your project.
Mr. Taylor. Mr. Taylor, I'll try to speak more slowly and, so that it's legible, and I apologize.
It, it's not you, it's, it's, the phone kind of breaks up a little bit.
Okay.
So, the project is a 20-foot, it's a one-time-use shipping container, so it's basically brand-new. We modify it to hold bottles and cans for the Oregon Bottle Drop. People can bring their bags in and they drop them off through this little door and they swipe a card. They put their bags inside the container, then the door closes, and they get paid for their bottles, or if they're a donation, they, they get them donated. And they, they don't have to count them or anything. The, the Bottle Drop does all that, the Oregon Bottle Drop does all that. The container will have cameras on it, one on the outside and one on the inside, and it'll also be monitored by the Bottle Drop. It will use just under two amps of power. It has a small fan. It has two exterior lights, they're LED lights. And a, a small awning on it.
Small what?
I beg your pardon, that last, what kind of light?
LED. And a, and a small awning.
I, I can't, I don't, I don't understand that word, the last word.
Uh, it's an awning, like, uh.
Awning.
Thank you.
Yeah. It doesn't use any water. I know that was a concern on one of the, one of the questions. Let's see. That's about it. It's very simple. It's anchored to the ground with engineered anchors. Any other, I guess that's about it.
Okay, I see that I have gone off track with, with my, with this, and I should have asked the, the planner to give a summary of the findings before you spoke, so I apologize for that. We have heard what you said, and, and I'm going to ask you to speak again after Joseph gives the staff report. So, my apologies for that, going off, but, so at this time, I would like to ask Joseph to give us the staff report or summarize the written staff report, please.
All right. Mr. Taylor did a great job explaining more of the technical details about the project. So, I will focus more on the planning side of things. This is a conditional use permit because it is a prefabricated structure going in, in the commercial zone. The primary use of the property is an outright use in the commercial zone. Everyone knows Ray's is our local grocery store, so it is outright permitted, but prefabricated structures are classified in our code as conditional use. Unfortunately, a lot of our standards governing conditional uses, prefabricated structures don't really apply here because they were written to be more, for more extensive projects. So, general things that are applicable setbacks, as far as I can tell, are all within our, are all within limitations. The current proposed location for the Bottle Drop doesn't violate setbacks, it doesn't limit access to the property, and it doesn't violate any height restrictions. And those are basically the, the, the big things that come out of our code. A lot of the other sections that I've put in there are kind of irrelevant to this particular case. So, my summary is that the proposed project is a Bottle Drop container to be installed at Ray's Food Place, 155 Oregon Street, Port Orford, Oregon. The installation is a prefabricated structure under our code, and my only recommendation as staff is to approve it with no conditions other than potentially changing the location of the, of where it's supposed to be installed.
Okay. Thank you. Does, anyone have any questions? Yes, Commissioner?
I have several questions. I guess the first one is, is this meant to replace the recycling facilities at Ray's?
That would be a question to.
Yes, to the applicant.
No, I'm, excuse me, I'm, I wanted to.
Oh, this is just for staff?
I wanted to ask questions of the staff.
Okay, I do have a question then. The findings say that it's not, call it a non-permanent structure, and so there a time limit on how long it can be there, or is it not permanent because it's, I think it's on wheels, if memory serves?
It's not permanent because it's not being put on a permanent foundation. If nests, if some need came up to move it, it, in theory, could be moved, so that is why I interpreted it to be non-permanent.
Okay, but the intention is that it's going to stay wherever it is for indefinitely?
I don't want to say indefinitely because, you know, in a few years, they might want to upgrade again or change, or we might get a really bad storm and they need to move it for whatever reason. It's just, it isn't being put in on a foundation. It has more easily replaceable anchoring, so to me, that would be non-permanent unless Crystal.
I have a question.
You speak, if I could.
The, my question of you or the gentleman from Ray's at some time is, the, does the Building Codes Division require them to be made permanent? In other words, I wondered if he, if they have consulted with the Building Codes Division. The only reason I ask that is because, not to see if you've done your homework, but I've been studying this prefabricated section of our code, which has a lot of things that aren't required of us anymore because the state building codes has requirements. Do you know?
I can't say for certain if the applicant has consulted with a state or county.
Maybe we can ask him that.
Yes.
When you get done.
Yes, it, it, as far as I know, it meets all state and county codes. It's engineered for the area. The engineer takes into account where it's going and what it is. And then architect draws up the, the plans and it has to go, usually they go through a permit process where I have to fill out a full building permit. Some places don't require it, some do.
Right, that's. Yeah.
You guys have to tell me, because some places don't require it. So.
It would be the state building codes that's in Curry County.
Yes, it, it will.
The state, Curry County has.
It's kind of a gray area, but it just states that it has to be anchored, is, is their code, and that the electrical has to be installed to code. Those seem like the only requirements.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
How much power does something require?
Two, two amps.
How much electric?
Or.
Two amps?
Yes, two amps, yes. Which is approximately 200 watts.
So, I'm familiar with the Bottle Drop and the larger versions in the bigger towns, and you have a little hatch that you open up and drop your bags into. So, this is not going to be a manned container, right?
No, it's going to be just like the ones in town, except.
So, at some point, it gets full and then.
They will come in, the Bottle Drop, I'm not, I'm actually.
Somebody comes along.
Yes, they will come in with a truck that goes, I think it goes to Brookings, and they will pick it up either on the way, one way or the other, I don't know their route. And then, when they pick it up, they take it in and all the bags get counted, the, the stuff inside, the bottles and cans. And then people's counts get credited.
Right. So, what, what happens if somebody shows up with? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I lost you there for a second.
Yeah, so what happens if somebody shows up with a box of bottles and just leaves them? Is, how does, how is it kept clean and do we know how it keeps from becoming just a trash dump?
It shouldn't become a trash dump because the only things that go in there are the, the bottles and cans that are pre-bagged, that people pre-bagged them and bring them in. I would assume if someone left a, a bag of cans or something out there, that the store would be responsible for cleaning it up or removing the bags.
Is this the part, are we asking the applicant?
Yeah.
Are we still asking staff?
I think we were still in the asking staff questions.
Yeah, I have one more question for staff. Is it, it wasn't clear to me if a permit is required or not? Well, I think that he, he needs to, when he gets our okay to go ahead, then the applicant needs to go to Building Codes with a planning clearance and see what they require. Okay, that's the next step then. Yep. Thank you. When you reviewed this, Joseph, there's no water at that site, so there's no opportunity to clean the site if needed?
Ray's has water, and I'm assuming whatever they used, whatever practice they used to clean the rest of the parking lot would also be able to clean the container.
So, it would have to be a pretty long hose or something that they bring in? I think it's, it's a valid concern. I'm not sure if you've been inside the little bottle recycling area at Ray's, but it's, it's pretty grody. It does get, people leave all kinds of trash and bottles and caps and things. Is it, I didn't see, is there a garbage in the plan to be somewhere in the vicinity of the proposed Bottle Drop?
No, there isn't. However, you could require it as a condition for approval and potentially have a cleaning schedule or some other similar, you know, condition tacked on.
Yeah, can we add that as, does everybody, does anybody else think that that's important? Yes.
Let's wait for the discussion on that.
Okay, so next, okay, got it.
Yes, Commissioner Lovendall.
Did you, the lighting of that they have proposed, this LED lighting, did you determine that it was in compliance with our dark sky ordinance?
Now that you are mentioning it, I did not double-check that. So, once again, that is something that can be added on now as a condition, is that any exterior lighting needs to comply with our local dark sky ordinance. Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Lovendall.
Making note of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our staff?
Yes, Joseph, is, maybe it's not for you to answer, but is there a reason why they're taking, changing the site for this? From beside the, the store where it is now and moving it toward the street?
It's in addition to that.
Oh, I see.
It's a secondary one, like Chairman Thielen said. Originally, this is actually different than their original proposal, which was on the south side of the building, but unfortunately, there wasn't enough room on that side of the building within the setbacks.
Yeah, it's a good question. Are there setbacks?
Yeah, evidently, this is a, I think these are commonly used for donations, so people donate bottles rather than taking them to the bottle recycling individually. You bag them up, drop them in, and it can go to the cause of your choice or something like that. You get a key card, you're.
And where are the ba, where are the bags available?
Well, we can ask, we'll have to ask.
Yeah, okay.
We'll have to ask the app.
There's a lot of, because there's no.
Just explaining to Commissioner Lawton, that's what I, I think it is. Any more questions, staff questions? Okay, Mr. Taylor, I think we have a couple of questions for you. I guess the first one, was there, was there going to be any provision for trash?
Usually, there is no trash because the people that drop them off, they just bring their green bags in, or their blue bags, they're special bags, they have a tag on them. They swipe their card and they put their bags in, and they're there for maybe 30 seconds to 45 seconds. Typically, with all the other sites, we haven't had garbage left there because people just pull up and put their bags in and leave. The Bottle Drop did these, I'm assuming for convenience, because they don't, people don't like to sit there and put their cans and bottles in the machine, which takes a lot of time, and then people have to sort through their garbage, like you said. This is more sanitary because they're all sealed up, the bags are sealed up, and usually nothing is, you know, there's no spillage or anything like that. So, they haven't had garbage, a garbage can or anything like that outside next to them, but I don't see it as a problem.
So, I, as I understand, then a, a person registers for this service and then they get a key card, and then they have bags, somehow they're provided with bags? How, how, how does that buy, the bag work? Does, where do they get the bags?
The bags are in the store. They're purchased, you can purchase the bags, you have to have an Oregon driver's license to have a card. And, yeah, it's, it's, it's just a, a way of people recycling their cans and bottles without having to deal with the machines because most people don't like that.
And then, I understand, this is, these are, I guess I, I made a note here, but I wasn't clear, so people are, people don't get money for these, they donate the ba, they donate the bottles, is that it?
No, you, if they're in a green bag, then you get the money on your card. It usually takes them 48 hours to get the money put back on your card. If, it's a blue, a blue bag, a donation bag, and then it just goes to the donation that you choose.
Oh. So, the card can be used like a debit card or?
It can be used as a debit card in the store, or you can get cash. Inside the store, there will be a kiosk, and you swipe your card and then you choose how much money you want to take out to use for groceries, or you can take whatever and get cash.
Okay, I, can I ask a question, a background question?
Yeah, sure.
I guess, maybe I missed it, but the background context is missing for me. Are you, is, are you representing Ray's, or is this affiliated with Ray's?
I'm actually a general contractor, and I build the Bottle Drops all over the place, and I, I build these shipping containers, and I take them to where they need to go and, and install them. I've been working for the Bottle Drop, I think about seven and a half to eight years now.
Okay.
But I do other stuff, too. I do.
Did Ray's request this or? Or?
That I don't know. That I don't know. That's a good question. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not part of the Bottle Drop, they just asked me to build them.
Who is, who asked you to look at?
The, the Oregon Bottle Redemption Corporation, OBRC, they requested one there, and they also requested one for a site in Brookings, one in Madras, and I got one in Hillsboro. One in Madras and, um, I got one in Hillsboro. But they just, they just get a contract from the, uh, store. And then when all the paperwork is done, they ask me to build it.
Okay, so Raze is in the loop on this then?
Yes, yes, they know about it for sure.
Okay, because it's going to be in their parking lot essentially.
It almost seems like we have a representative from Raze to answer some questions that we have.
Crystal, did you have a?
Well, I have a question and maybe this is for Raze, but I would, I'm wondering why it's, why you want only a two-year permit for this?
I don't think we're asking for a two-year permit. I think it's just a, um, a regular permit for as long as they need to use this container.
Well, the, it's being processed under a temporary prefabricated office structure, which is only for two-year permit and usually a conditional use permit. Once it's constructed, can go on forever, but this would suggest that you would need to be, um, stop that for years. Maybe Joseph has some.
Didn't process it as a temporary office structure? In my findings for the temporary office structure, I said that this section of code is not applicable because it's, it's not a temporary office structure.
Well, it's a permanent one.
It's not. The idea is that it's going to be there and it's not going to move, but it's not permanent in the sense that it's incapable of being moved.
So no foundation that you're planning for this, it's just going to be tied down? Is that?
Uh, he said, uh, Mr. Taylor said it was going to be anchored.
So my concern is that, um, it's, it may either be permanent or temporary. And if it's permanent, whatever the building codes will require you to do for a permanent building is what you want to do. And we'd, we wouldn't tell you how to do backfill or something like that. But state building codes would be the ones that you would, you have to do whatever they say. You understand that, right?
Yes, yes. And, uh, normally on a forty-foot shipping container, this is only a twenty, but normally on a forty-foot shipping container, it requires a permit. In your paperwork that I got off your, um, website, it says that this is not required to have a permit because it's under the size. Um, but I can get a full building permit for it and it will be inspected by an inspector. And actually maybe two inspectors, electrical inspector and a structural inspector. Um, and we'll have to pass those, those inspections.
Thank you. That's, the reason I'm asking is not because, because I have questions about our code and the time it was written. And so we, we will want you to come back to us with whatever state building codes require. So that we have that in our records. And if they say you don't need any kind of a foundation, but we don't want you to come in under temporary structure, just because you don't want to build a foundation or something because temporary structure would put a limitation on the time that you could use it.
Oh, okay. I'm not, I'm not quite sure what you're asking. Uh.
I'm just suggesting that, um, whatever building codes requires for something that's going to be used there for size on that property. It should, you don't want to come in under a rule that only lets them stay for two years.
Yeah, I don't thi, I don't think that's, um, how it will be stated on the permit. I, I think in your area, the permits get, go through Curry County. And they will tell me exactly what I need to do. Yeah. Which is, which is normal. They tell me exactly what needs to be served some. Okay, I can give you a copy of the, a permit when it's.
We need to, we need to know what that is. Yes, because our code is, um, old and we're pretty sure that building codes has changed since this was written. As long as you're in compliance with them, I'm pretty sure we'll be okay. But we don't want to have to go back to Raze or whoever is doing this in two years and say, we didn't make you follow the building codes, therefore it's time, your permit's over.
Okay.
Commissioner Boyd?
It almost sounds like they don't need a conditional use permit, they just need a, a building permit.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking because we have rules here, but I've been talking with building codes, not about this permit, but about other permits and our code language. And I feel like it's out of date and I feel that what we need to do is whatever state building codes requires.
So do you think maybe he should just come back with a application?
I do. And I think that, I mean, whatever we, I mean, we can make some conditions on it for the things that we're pointing at. But, um, yeah, we'll want to see the building codes thing because this business in here, in our code to me has begun to feel convoluted. And that's because it was written before the building codes were taken care of. But I'm the city planner, that's why I'm saying these things.
Oh, no, I, I, I guess.
I mean, Joseph's trying to do, but.
I, I think you're.
So I'm, I'm. I'm sorry. I'm confused. Do you?
I have a question.
Does the permit come from, um, Port Orford or does it come from Curry County?
There's two permits. The, the permit tonight is to say whether you can do it so that you can go ahead and get your building permit from Curry County. And if they tell you, you don't have to do any. Yeah.
Commissioner Lovendahl, you had a question?
I do have a question for staff. Um, this is a shipping container. This is just a shipping container. So do we have, is it okay for anybody just to come and put a shipping container in any zone and call it, permanently and call it a building or a structure? Or something that's used commercially?
Does it say it's a shipping container?
It is a shipping container.
So that's a, a question I had. If, if you look at the section I, the prefabricated structure, which is this is evidently being put under. In A four, the last paragraph on, this is on page of the staff report. Uh, item IV says, if the prefabricated structure is accessory to an existing commercial culture, existing commercial structure, it shall be placed on the parcel in a manner that, such that it has the appearance of being addition to the existing structure. This can be achieved by using similar exterior paint, siding material, or facade features such as the existing structure. I would think that if it, a shipping container out on the street would not look like an addition.
No. Correct.
According to this code.
But this is for permanent placement and.
But it's an.
We have this temporary one, temporary boarding too.
It's, it's an accessory to an existing commercial stretch, structure.
Isn't there already one in the back of Raze that?
It would be similar to that one. That is an accessory commercial structure, I would say. And it, it has been made to look like the, the Raze building.
Right.
Is there a reason that it needs to be in the parking lot? Can it be next to Raze on the north side of Raze, for example? Between Raze and the easement?
Yeah.
I'm just not sure why. Maybe I missed, um, oh, well, right now I'm just talking to the commission. I mean, I suppose you could answer that question. Is there a reason that it's out kind of by the highway?
Uh, as far as I know, they put it there. Um, as far as I know, that is the, where the O B R C chose to put it because of, um, access with their truck. Um, so they can access it and load and unload, actually unload it.
To access it, yeah.
Yeah.
They decided the location.
Raze decided the location?
No, um, the Oregon Bottle Redemption Association. Did Raze reach out to the Oregon Bottle Redemption Association or was it the other way around?
I have no idea. I'm not part of their conversation, so I don't, I don't know.
Is that a private entity, private business entity? Do you know? You might not know.
Oregon, the Oregon Bottle Drop is a co-op, I think.
They are located, they've got a big, uh, redemption center in Coos Bay, North Bend.
Yes, there is, yeah.
And
Is it a business?
I used to use the one in Albany and it, it's pretty handy. You get, you get paid five or 10 cents for a bag. Put your bottles and cans in there and then open up the deal, you drop it in there and it's tagged. And then you get the money back. You, you get, you, it's pretty handy.
Well, there's no question that it's handy, that it's useful. Yeah.
I'm not saying it's not.
Yeah.
Well, the buildings are fine.
O B R C.
The buildings that they have are full-on buildings.
Right.
Not shipping containers.
Not.
Yeah.
Shipping container.
I, I have a question if you're still thinking about yours. Or, Mr. Taylor, have there been any other proposed locations besides the one that Joseph described earlier? On the south side of the building?
I, I don't think so, no. I think it was just the, those two locations where they could get their truck in.
It's an eighteen-wheeler or it's?
Yes, yeah. It's a semi-truck. I don't know.
I think, um, there's a lot of questions that I think Mr. Taylor can't answer for us, but I feel they need to be answered and that has to do with the garbage can and cleaning the site and the dark sky ordinance. And then why that.
I can meet the, the dark, the dark sky.
I'm sorry, what?
Um, I have, I have put in, uh, lighting on containers that do meet the dark sky and that's not a problem. I know what you're talking about. Um, Primeville was the same way.
Great.
Well, um, this is a permanent prefabricated structure. Our code says it needs to be on a foundation.
Anchored makes, makes it sound permanent. Anchoring it.
Well, I guess I don't know what anchors are. I thought those are just, um.
I mean, there's.
Like you.
On page, uh, in the design, in the design. There isn't, I can't quite read how deep it's supposed to go, but.
Very poxy.
On page one of the design.
But yet, but if it's prefabricated structure under section I here, the prefabricated structure shall be placed on a permanent foundation that has perimeter walls and suitable strength and support capability to meet state building wind seismic loads applicable to this city. I mean, if it's a prefabricated structure.
It does meet.
We have got to follow. I beg your pardon?
It does meet all seismic loads.
It does have an engineer stamp.
Yeah, oh, good, yes. Wonderful. So then, but it does need to be set on a, on a, uh, permanent foundation that has perimeter walls.
And then they have to be, uh, painted or something to blend in with Raze. That's what it says.
Well, it has to, it has to have the appearance of being an addition to the existing structure, which can be done in some, one of several ways. I would say if it had walls like Raze, that would look like it was. I don't think you're gonna, you're going to make a shipping container look like, uh, an addition to a building.
Yeah, I mean, it could, really, there's probably a lot of ways to interpret that, but if, what about painting it beige, just like the same color as Raze? You know?
It would still be a shipping container.
It would still be a shipping container, yeah.
We haven't had that discussion yet.
I would think if it was next to Raze and it was a shipping container, it would look like an addition.
Right, on the north side or?
South side, whatever. If it was, if it was attached to it or right there. It would look to me as a citizen, as it would have the appearance of being an addition.
Yeah, I mean.
If it was off by itself by the highway and it looked like a shipping container, it wouldn't look like, it wouldn't have the appearance of an addition to me.
So when, when we open up our discussion amongst our.
Oh, yeah.
What is, is it on one lot with Raze?
Yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting ahead of myself. I am a little disconcerted that we don't have someone from Raze here.
Or the bottle drop place.
Or the bottle drop people. I mean, we have a representative, probably, you, I'm sure you have a, a document, uh, allowing you to speak for Bottle Drops, sir?
Well, I'm applying for the permit for the shipping container, so I guess I do. I don't know. No one's ever asked me that. This is the first, first time we've ever had a city council meeting over, um, a bottle drop, so.
Well, this is the planning.
But playing commission.
I believe that the.
Is it really prefabbed?
Under our code, I believe it would be a prefabricated structure. I pulled it up. Our code defines a prefabricated structure. It is a building or sub-assembly which has been in whole or substantially part-manufactured or assembled using closed construction at an off-site location. To be wholly or partially assembled onsite does, does not include a manufactured structure, so to, when I read that, to me, it's being a shipping container that's being modified off-site and then they need to install it onsite. So to me, that was the most applicable definition in our code for what it is.
I don't think.
Are other towns using ship, are other towns using the railroad cars for this?
Shipping containers?
Shipping containers?
Yes.
He submitted some, a couple of pictures, one of.
Yeah, pictures of it.
On, uh, I don't know if they're in the packet or not, but.
Must be.
One at Erickson's and. I know I saw it on my.
Drawing of it.
I saw it online.
Yeah.
Also, I have pulled up one of the examples onto the projector.
Oh.
There you.
Yep. Oh, well, I mean, we know what a shipping container looks like. Is it the bottle drop, shipping container bottle drop?
Yes, this is a shipping container bottle drop. Uh, I will pull up the other one, which I think we'll look a little bit closer to it because this is one of the ones that has the awning. I just need to.
We have that, do we have that?
Yeah.
So I, I have, so we need to, we, um, I is there any? Do you? Do you have any more? I would like to just move this, move this along. We'll probably come back to you, but I, I would like to see if there's anyone online that is, would like to speak against this. Anyway, you'll get another chance to speak, Mr. Taylor.
Okay.
Hey, hi, this is Jen Bailey, 418 16th Street. I'm not necessarily.
Was your name Haley?
Jen, Jennifer Bailey. I'm at 418 16th Street. I'm not necessarily opposed. I'm just a little surprised at the idea of a shipping container right against that strip that the city just spent T L T money to beautify, quote unquote. So, and listening here to your discussion, it seems that, that there hasn't been, there might be more thought put into alternate locations where it could be. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Thanks.
Did you have more green, more pictures of the color?
I have it pulled up right now.
Is that a shipping?
That's a shipping container, yeah.
It's right up next to the structure.
And this is the one that has the awning.
So the ones I've seen are behind, like behind, say.
Right. Yeah, behind Ray's or.
See how a 18-wheeler would be any harder to get to that than it would if it was to the side of Ray's?
Right, or on the backside.
Backside.
And then to the north.
Can I, can I address Mr. Taylor real quick?
Go ahead.
Okay. I know it seems, you, you said that you never had to go through this process before, but we're a small town and both sort of putting shipping containers all over, you know, it becomes, it becomes kind of unsightly. That's why we're spending so much time trying to figure out if this is the right location, you know? Maybe not necessarily what's best for the Oregon Bottle Redemption Association, but also what's best for the town.
Right, right. And I think they also have to make sure it's safe for customers to use it. They, they wouldn't want someone in a loading dock area or something where they could possibly get run over or hurt. I'm, I'm just assuming. I'm not the guy who chooses where the, where they go, so.
Right. Have you, have you been to Port Orford?
Yeah, I've been through Port Orford. I haven't spent much time there. But yes, I've been through there.
Yeah, I think, what would be the process for trying to come up with a better location? They put so much, they put a lot into, you know, the design and the engineering, but I.
I have to.
I agree with Jen Bailey.
Yeah, okay. Do I, do I close the hearing before we talk ourselves?
Real quick, before you do that, though, we did receive written testimony you wanted me to read.
I would like you to read the testimony. There's, so there's testimony, I don't know, is it for or against?
I believe it would be classified, it's sort of like Jen Bailey's. It's not really an opponent to the idea, it's just.
Okay.
You know?
Well, just let's have it.
All right, so this is from Susan Russell, Port Orford Main Street President. Main Street is actively involved in the beautification of Port Orford's business corridor. We have received multiple grants to do landscaping, painting, facade work, murals, and other curb appeal enhancing activities. We strongly object to having a bottle and can recycling station with its wind-borne resultant trash and smell located so close to 101 next to a T L T grant landscaping project, our beautification library, and our new pavement projects. We anticipate that locate, that location would generate much more trash due to patrons not taking the time to cross the parking lot to get someone to service a jammed or full machine. If Ray's feels they need a bigger facility, we would suggest having one along at the north side of the building, still close to service personal, personnel, and less affected by our strong wind blasts down 101. Please consider the effects of this rumored recycling station and the reality of our climate. Sincerely, Susan Russell, President of Port Orford Main Street.
Okay. Do, do any commissioners have more questions for Mr. Taylor? I'm going to go ahead and close this, we can talk and we can, we can reopen it and ask him questions later if we need to.
Just one question.
Yes, please.
Who actually will own this? And is it a rental that Ray's rents this from the Oregon Bottle Redemption Association, so they don't actually own it? What's that relationship?
I honestly don't know. I, I, I don't know who owns it. I'm assuming that the Ray's will own it. But I would like to say one thing, there, this isn't a, a can machine. They do, they don't put individual cans in it. It is a door you open up and put a sealed bag in. So there won't be stuff blowing around and, and trash and stuff, so. But I, I don't know. I think Ray owns, Ray's owns it. They may have a lease agreement for the equipment inside. There's a, there's a router and cameras and stuff like that, so, but I do not know any more than that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. I'm going to go ahead and close this meeting and we're gonna, we can talk then. I'm going to close this meeting at five, six, 36. Commissioner Lovendal.
Well, I'd just like to discuss now.
Yeah, let's talk.
One of the first things that came to me, which Ms. Russell and Ms. Bailey talked about was the location. And, you know, aside from all the other aspects as far as how it fits into our code, is to have a shipping container parallel, right out there on 101 is not, seems incongruous to what Main Street and what we as a community have been trying to do to make us feel more welcoming to beauty, for tourists, for our own citizens. And so I think the location right there is inappropriate, aside from all the other aspects that we have to do, deal with. Should be, we should consider having, the idea of it's wonderful, but I think that.
I agree, yeah. And the other pictures where the shipping container Bottle Drops were located right next to structures, right next to buildings. But I, I agree that the north side of the building would be a better spot.
And they looked like they were at the back of the building too. It wasn't like it was right out.
Right, the north side could be off Idaho. The truck could go right down Idaho to pick up instead of coming in on 15th. Because if, that's pretty narrow there, so if the, if the truck stops right there on 15th next to, that could cause problems going in and out of Ray's even, in and out of the parking lot and through.
I know, I've seen they, they back semi-trucks right up to the back of Ray's.
Yeah.
So, and I believe there's plenty of space along.
There is, yeah.
Space where their loading dock is.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and my feeling is they'll drop the thing, anchor it down, and when they come to unload the bags, it's not going to take a semi, I wouldn't think.
They'll have a pallet jack.
I mean.
And even if they did, Idaho would, would provide ample access. And it would be off, you know, the highway is a wind tunnel, summer and winter, so it would be off the highway.
So does it seem reasonable to, to ask the applicant to come back with a location that is adjacent to the building? And more information about the, whether it needs to be fastened down or?
Yes.
Information from the county.
What, what the building codes.
What the building codes.
For a permanent building there because otherwise. As a temporary.
Well, we can't.
I guess I don't see the.
It's not temporary if it's meant to be there.
I don't know.
Permanently.
Joseph said there's something in here about the size, right?
No, it's just that's why he got the paperwork he got instead of just a regular planning clearance is because it wasn't more than 200 square feet.
I see. Oh, it wasn't.
Yeah, in your summary.
Yeah.
I would also love to hear from.
Still, it's, they don't want it temporary. They want it to be there, I think.
Yeah.
Would love to hear from Ray's as well. Right, whoever's going to own it, be responsible for, yeah.
I know when I wanted to do some work with this city to work with another property, that I had to sign, have a notarized affidavit that I was able to actually.
Represent.
Talk with the city and represent with the city, which I got. But if, if Ray's was, was involved or the owner was involved or, you know, we had a legal, someone legally that we're dealing with, it would make a difference.
Well, Bottle Drop is a statewide organization. It's probably quasi-governmental.
But the.
Co-op.
But I, I believe the owner of the property is the.
Applicant.
Is the, the legal person. Even if you're, even if it's, because it was, there's discussions with the golf course, even if you're leasing land, it's the owner that is the, where the rubber meets the road. So what are our choices here? I mean, we. I mean, I don't want to say no, but I, I mean, I'd like, I'd like.
O B R C, Oregon Bottle.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, whatever they are. O B R C is the group that owns and operates all Oregon Bottle Drop Redemption Centers.
Okay. So they own the center, but they don't own the ground that it sits on?
Correct. So we should be having the involvement.
Oh, it says O R B C serves as the not-for-profit operator of Oregon's Bottle Bill. Through O B R C and the Bottle Drop Network, we recycle nearly 2 billion beverage containers annually. I mean, I like, I like the idea.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I like the, I think it's a great idea, yeah.
No problem with the idea, just the location.
Well, Ray's must be getting something.
That's exactly right.
Leasing this.
Yeah.
And they sell the bags, so they get a part of the bag money probably.
Yeah.
So I see.
Or they just get rent.
I don't know.
I, I, on the paper, I looked through the paperwork in the planning application and I believe that it, the owner was Ray's in Medford, so I don't even know if anyone locally was involved in this.
Maybe we could ask Terry to come in.
Well.
Or find, or whoever owns it.
If they want, I, I think that, I think we need representation from the owner of the, at least the owner of the land. We need to have a represent, I don't think this is even an actual, or a legal application.
You're saying we can't grant the permit to somebody who doesn't own?
No.
Yeah.
He's not the owner.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, an option, or at least, you know, one potential way forward that I don't think many people realize with these kinds of hearings. Can motion to continue this at the next meeting and that would allow us to contact Ray's and O B R C and verify things with the state building code and then we can get a lot of these concerned, concerns addressed.
And, yeah, maybe also have them brainstorm some different, better locations that are, make more sense for Port Orford.
It would be very hard to.
So I guess, so one, so to follow up on that, I like that idea and maybe what we can say is, I mean, and maybe we would even want to vote on it, but that the location was not acceptable by, that the, the I five, or the 101 location was not acceptable. And to further define. All right, I guess, I guess that's your ballet with, what kind of a structure it is. I guess it's a, if it's a prefabricated structure, that's what it is.
That.
Then it needs to have a permanent foundation.
Needs a permanent foundation, so there you go.
Because building codes told me that if we require something, they will require it.
Is that the county, you mean? Yeah.
State building codes.
Oh, state building codes.
Because I had them go through our requirements and they said some of them are out of date. But they said it doesn't matter if the city requires something, that's what you have to have.
Okay.
And so.
So it would be required, you know, regardless?
Well, it would be our thing to do.
Yeah.
Did I do a little investigating on that? Because I might have some connections in other places that might tell us a little bit more about dropping a shipping container. Because those other two were, they did, those might be permanent foundations. It might be considered permanent foundations when it's anchored in the concrete.
I would like to know that.
A shipping container might be considered its own foundation or something.
Yeah.
It's own.
We would never say no to somebody offering to, to look information.
So, Commissioner Boydson, if you would.
Yeah, there is an example right there.
Yeah, I, I just pulled them up and they're, for lack of a better term, bolted into the ground.
Right.
I don't think we should make them put it on a foundation if that's, that'll meet code.
Yeah. Yeah.
If that'll meet code, I'm, I'm happy with it.
Say that's.
That's what Jerry is offering to find out.
Jerry's willing to.
You could say that that was, that the, what it was sitting on was the foundation.
What is the best?
And the bolts were the, were the hold downs.
I didn't know, kinds of stuff.
Depending on the placement, though.
Here, foundations are the most popular choice for shipping container homes.
Well, but that's just the.
Okay, well, I'm saying, if it, you know, if it doesn't go on a parking lot and it goes on the north side of Ray's on Idaho.
Would have to be some concrete.
Exactly, yeah, because it's, it's just, you know, sandy soil.
So I would entertain a motion to hold this over and, and instruct the applicant to come back with.
Alternative location?
Alternative locations. A local representative? I'd like to hear a local, a local representative here. I don't know if that's, if we can make them do that, but that's, I mean, this is a small town. We don't just do this stuff.
Does it have to be at Ray's?
Someone from Ray's.
Does it have to be at Ray's?
It sounds like it's associated with Ray's, though. But we don't have, really have that context.
Well, maybe it's goes.
It's possible that Ray's is charging a lease on that, so they do get a little bit of money on it.
Yeah.
There has to be a place for the folks to purchase the bags. Ray sells the bags.
And to get, and to get the card and all that.
And all, and they get the card and, you know, that whole thing. So may, there's some business relationship, I'm sure.
The bags are only like 10 or 15 cents.
I want to wrap this up because we have a huge agenda.
Okay, Commissioner Head, I move to hold over the hearing. I'll use permit.
Two months? One month or two months?
Until the next.
Can we do that or do the, does the applicant have to do?
Whatever we state here, well, the applicant's supposed to agree to it, but where are they?
I'm right here.
They're not here.
Yeah.
What am I supposed to agree to?
We should bring it up. I think we should hold it, to find out next month what they want to do.
Okay. Commissioner Head, I move to hold over the, the hearing for the conditional use permit for the Oregon Bottle Redemption Association with the provision that the applicant brings a local representative and provides alternative locations for the shipping container.
On the site even is okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah, anywhere on the site.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that this be held over for.
Until the next planning, commission meeting.
Planning commission meeting. And the applicant bring back alternative locations, not on 101.
Yes.
Not on Highway 101.
And provide local representation of the owners.
Yes, indeed.
I will pass on the, the information.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we, Commissioner Boydson?
Sorry?
You're voting yes or no on the motion?
Oh, yes.
It's iron A. Commissioner Head?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovendal?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Thielenstein, yes. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Can we, he'll, he'll be notified in writing?
Yes, I will send him an email restating that motion. And if I can find Terry's email, then I'll C C him on it. And if I can find Terry's email, then I'll CC him on it, and I'll make sure to CC you and Crystal as well.
Great. Thank you.
So Terry is.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Terry is the manager of. Thank you.
Terry.
Well, what about, what about?
Yeah.
We should be telling these people.
Terry.
Terry with a T.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Oh, I thought I said Harry.
I thought you said Harry.
Crystal said.
This one, right? Or we're.
But yes, that is, Terry is the manager of that specific race.
But indeed, I'll ask him to either be the, you know.
I'll ask him to either be here in person or to submit a statement in writing explaining Raze's position.
And that he's authorized as the owner. He's not the owner.
Commissioner Boyston's going to look up the grounding of these things.
And what, and what time will the meeting be in September? Will it be at 5:30 PM? And it will be the second Tuesday, right?
Yes.
So just to restate that, so it's explicit on the record, this will be continued to the September 10th meeting, and that is September 10th at 5:30 in City Council Chamber.
Okay. Moving right along. Conditional use permit extension discussion. And we have two chunks of stuff here. I want to try to get through these if, as much as we can. So on number seven, the extension discussion, so at the last meeting, at the end of the meeting, I asked everyone to just put forward ideas that they had at that time on what this conditional use extension language should look like, and I went online and looked at a lot of different extension wordage and put this together as a, just as a draft. So if I can find it. There it is. So I hope everybody has read it and has thought about this. It's a complicated thing. The only piece that I was just thinking that maybe should be added was if there was to be a on if, if this was appealed, that there'd be a fee that the applicant has to pay. And I would put that yeah, like, D. Applicant or a appellant?
I'm sorry, where are you looking?
I'm just adding D on, on the page one.
Page one.
Page nine.
Item seven, CUP extension requirements. She was a page nine.
Nine of your pack.
Appellant, yeah.
The appellant.
Whoever appealed it.
Yes.
Pays the piece.
Any appellant to planning or council decision.
Including professional fees that the city may accrue.
Yeah, I have a thousand bucks.
Is subject, subject to application fee and any engineering.
And planning.
How about just any?
Professional.
Professional.
Additional professional services.
And additional professional services.
That are required. May be required by the city.
Additional professional services required by the city.
And so what would you think that fee would be?
I think we can just let the city set it. Yes, please, go ahead.
The city has consistently required applicants when they're coming in for something to pay for attorney fees, engineering fees, planning fees that are outside of what the city already spends on Joseph and Melissa and their staff. So we have consistently done that for at least 15 years that I recall. So this would just be a notification that that would
Be to pay for all of it?
Yes.
There's not just a, like a flat fee or anything?
No, because they can get, they can go on and on.
Yeah, I was just saying, you could have a basic fee plus all those other fees.
Yes. And they will have. I mean, they do have. We just didn't have it in every section of the code. But that puts them on notice.
Yeah. Yes.
And I, I think to answer Commissioner Lavendall's question, previously, I looked at a fee list from, I believe, 2012. It was 50% of the initial application cost. So whatever the initial application costs, depending on what they're appealing, it's half of that fee to appeal it.
But half of that fee might not cover everything.
Yeah, hence the additional professional services.
Yeah, well, no, that's it. It's in here.
But we'll, we have to make sure the wording is clear because we don't have any fee right now for the appeal at all.
Right. That's what I'm saying. I'm just trying to get a little.
So that, I would imagine that the, so should, should that fee be specified in the, in here?
You don't want to specify the fee, but you want to specify the procedure for how you get to the fee.
The formula, like 50% of the actual plus or all those, the engineering, the.
So do we want to spell that out? 50% of the, 50% of original?
Well, I don't, I think it'd be more appropriate to be appealed to planning commission or city council as subject to application fee set by city council and any additional professional services that are required by the city.
There you go. There you go.
So then the city council can routinely go back and change that fee depending on circumstances.
I'm going to ask you for that wording later.
Will do.
And then we don't have to know. We don't have a lack of clarification as to which fee is it that they're supposed to be.
Right.
Yeah.
So so I, I don't know that I really want to take the time to go through all these points, but it, but they're here now for everybody to look at. And I was hoping that you could look at them now and then at the next meeting. If you have specific things, or if you have a specific point you'd like to make now.
Yeah, I won't be at the next meeting.
Well, if you have a specific point you'd like to make now, I want to hear it.
Okay, on item two?
Yes.
Since it says has taken, for purposes of statutes, you know, I like that, but I think they need to provide documentation. Not just say, oh, we spent 25% of the total project.
So you would say then, in the event that such use involves construction, documentation?
You know, just.
Documentation should be provided.
You know, to substant, you know, to substantiate that they've spent the 25%.
How will, how will they know that?
Receipts.
Receipts.
Well, how do they know what the total cost is going to be?
It's an estimate, estimated cost for the project.
The, the total cost is on the.
Yeah, like on this one, it's 44,000 and.
Oh, you mean the CUP permit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought you were talking about the project value.
Well, actually, it is project value. So it's
Yeah.
25% of the total project value. Well, the project, oh, right, because the CUP would only be for the.
Know what that is.
Joseph has his hand up.
So that's very similar to other definitions of substantial construction I've seen, except for there's one word I've seen that isn't here, which is projected, the projected project cost. So it, it makes it clear that it's whatever, you know, the estimate is.
And nobody's coming to us without knowing about how much they're going to spend on a project.
Well, in fact, you have to submit a dollar value, what you think your project is, before you get your permit.
Yes.
So.
So that figure should be.
So.
But we wouldn't know that at the time of an appeal. And neither would they.
Already got their permit.
Well, when you have substantial construction, you have substantial construction, and you don't need to have an extension anymore.
Right. Once they've had, once they've done 25%, they don't need, they're, they're made.
So I don't, I don't, I don't think at this time that anybody knows how much that's going to cost for, say, Oak River. Or I don't think that a lot of the people who are proposing to do something have a final figure for it. I don't, I don't think they do at the time that they, when they're still working on the permitting.
This is, they've already had, this is for an extension of their conditional.
I know, but they're supposed to be working on the permitting. And they haven't got it yet, or they would be asking for an extension.
So when you apply for a permit, you, you state the expected value and cost.
On your, on your planning clearance?
Yes.
But we're not at the planning clearance point, and if they haven't done substantial construction yet.
No, 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 no. Planning clearance is before the CUP.
Right.
Paperwork, we, all this paperwork that we just got is planning clearance. This is all planning clearance work, and there's a, there's a 48, 400 48,000. It says right on here.
4,800 and some.
This one does. But we don't usually have a planning clearance when we come in for a conditional use permit.
You don't. It just happened to this time. Yeah, I had to give my, that's right. I gave mine at the building permit.
Right.
When I got my building permit, which was after planning.
Right.
Well.
So I just don't think that's a good, I mean, I think there's some other way we should do it.
Okay, so I'll go back to the drawing board with that one. Yes.
The other way I've commonly seen substantial construction being defined as either, you know, foundations are in place or all applicable permits and government agents sign offs have been acquired, and that's something that, you know, those things are relatively easy to.
Right, those are in here.
Verify. Okay.
They're, they're in the examples. Those exist.
Okay.
I'm going to work on this again.
Okay.
Anything else that just has come up? And so if not, let's keep looking at this. I keep, I wake up in the morning, I think, oh, what about that? So we'll just keep working on it, and it'll, it'll work out.
And eventually, this will be merged into the code changes that we're doing this fall.
And how many times can you apply for a extension on?
Once. That's what, well. No, I mean, right now, we can do it over and over and over.
Yeah, but this says once.
This says once. So this would be an initial two years.
Yeah, two years, and then they get one more shot at it. Not eight, not 13, not 17.
And then you can just get another permit.
And we could also change our permit. I would suggest that we should have a two, two years before. They have two years to work on stuff before they come back for an extension, because that's what other cities are doing.
So that's what we got, two, two years.
So that's, you know, that's like getting.
Three. Commissioner Head?
I'm not sure if I missed this because I had an important phone call, but I would like there to be an actual application form, so we're not ever in the position again, well, was this email an application? I don't know, was it? He said application in the email.
They wanted it.
Yeah, well, no, we need, we need a form that is on the website that can even be submitted electronically. We should not be chasing down applicants for their application.
So if you look at B1, the application extension, application fee is paid. So once, once, once they pay a fee, it's kind of golden.
Once they pay a fee.
Once they pay the application fee, they're.
What is the application? There was a lot of question around what serves. Because there wasn't a fee.
They just said it was an application.
Right, but then they said it's not an application, but it is. So, so now whenever the fee is paid, that's going to be.
Stamp it.
Okay. Shouldn't we have like the planning clearance application form, for example?
Yeah, we should.
We should have a form. I feel like there should be a form. So so there's no, no more.
Something other than the one we send to.
Yeah. If there is a loophole, it will be exploited. So there needs to be an application, and then we have something to stamp instead of just a printed email. We have like an actual form that stamped, like paid. Right?
Okay, if you have a yeah, I don't forms in this, but I
What?
Application extension, the application extension, application fee, application, applicable extension, application fee is paid. Yeah, so I would assume there would be.
Or application is submitted and fee is paid, or something to that effect. Application form is submitted and fee is paid. That means we have to create, we're committing to creating an application form.
Form is completed.
Documented. Instead of that exist.
Yeah.
And fee is paid.
On number three, it should say, there are special or unusual circumstances documented.
Documented.
An extension.
Yes, documented.
And presented.
Well, number two says, it provides documentation to support the extension. Yeah, but the unusual circumstances.
Should be documented as well. That's a pretty nebulous term. What's unusual to me may be just fine.
Right.
COVID.
Anything else?
It only lasts for so long.
And then we'll move on to the big guns. All right, I'm going to move on. Let us move on to item number eight, planning matters. This is not, we're not going to be able to go through this line by line. If you have read through it and you have comments that, or, you know, points that you want to make, let's talk about them, but.
Well, I would like to just say a few things about this.
It's your, you're on, you're, it's your show here.
Well, so what we've been doing with this update for the code, for the housing thing, is taking different things that the state is wanting us to look at for housing. And it has become apparent to me that, yeah, those are good, and we're, we're going to get there, and we've got most of those underway. We've reviewed a lot of them. But they change the actual uses in the zones, and I feel like we have to spend some time looking at those as a group. Because that's a surprise to people if all of a sudden their property has a conditional use where before they had an outright use. People when we're changing the code. And we need to understand why we're doing it. So as you have this great big packet of materials again, because I don't know how to separate them anymore. They're all related, and there's more that I turned out to you or passed out to you. But let, let's, I'll just give you an example. I mean, we don't have time to do them all, but for example, let's go to page five.
That's where I'm at.
Page five is the 1R zone. Now, the 1R zone is the most restrictive of the residential zones. And then on page six, you have the 2R zone. So you don't have the yellow stuff, but you can see faint little highlights because I put notes on these, because I have to give myself notes on this stuff, or I can't remember it. Because there is so much technical stuff in here that the state has required and that they want changed. So for instance, we go to page five. So we had to redo completely manufactured home and prefab dwellings compliance. But most of that, except for a few highlighted words, are the same as what we had before. It's an outright use. It's only an outright use because the state says it is. Because they feel like they regulate manufactured dwellings. Now, if I make a mistake on this, I'm going to find it. But I'm giving this as an example. Because I have a checkmark by it, which means I've already gone through it twice. But the state stuff is they, they change a lot of our rules. So go to number okay, number three, accessory dwelling. So accessory dwelling has come to our attention. So accessory dwelling is come to our attention on all the stuff from the state that we don't want those to be conditional uses because it takes a long time and people won't be able to do anything and it'll cost them a lot of money. And we have a lot of stuff coming to the planning commission and the idea is to encourage these. So we have to have a bunch of standards that are pretty well set in stone of this is what we want you to do. And it's not gonna be parking, I mean, that's what we kind of decided and it probably kind of goes along with the rest of our code. We don't have any parking requirements and there's no way to start designing parking requirements with an add-on when you don't have parking requirements to start with. Because you can't say an added parking space because you don't know if they already have a parking space or maybe they have 10. It, it gets real convoluted. So then we go to this chat, let's go there, 1716-090 and let's find, 1716-09.
Page 14.
Page 14, okay. So on page 14, we start having the criteria for an ADU at the bottom, very last thing. So the first thing is, it should be not permitted.
Not, I was gonna say, because I said it was not permitted.
And then ADU is prohibited from being advertised, promoted, or utilized for a short-term rental or vacation rental.
No, it is.
Okay, yeah. It's permitted to be a long-term, but, but it's not permitted to be a short-term rental. And so we have that wording. Then we go to the next page and we have all these things we've looked at before. Then we get to G and I have some notes because I had some questions. Applications for an ADU shall include a site plan with measurements showing that there's room. See, that's where I thought rubber meets the road. We can't require three spaces like we talked about because we don't have any on the lot to start with. You know, that's gonna probably be out.
Okay.
Then we have the other stuff that seems to move along with it.
Can I just say, can I drop into I, GHI?
That's where I dropped.
Where it says the ID, the ADU shall obtain separate.
So that's a question.
And I was gonna look into that while I looked and I came up with some language. An ADU shall obtain separate connections to service pipes for sewer and water from those of the single household.
I, you're looking at I.
Subject to requirements of the Oregon plumbing code. Just a suggestion.
So I kind of have a problem with that because if you put an addition to a house, you don't have to have a separate water line, separate sewer line, just because you add it on to a house. And in a way, maybe you're gonna move grandma into that addition that you just built on. But you don't have to reconnect a new water line to that.
Right. I'm with you there. That's why I said that.
Yeah, okay.
So rather than a hookup, rather than digging up the street and putting another sewer in for that, her, for grandma's ankle to go down the same four-inch pipe that goes into the sewer.
Right.
Let, let the four-inch pipe suffice that's there.
That's what I.
That's just what I'm proposing.
That's what I would suggest.
SDC fees are another issue.
And then subject to the Oregon plumbing codes. In other words, if, if you're gonna have three people, if you have enough room.
If a sewer will handle 12 fixture units and you put in, you gotta put in a bigger sewer, just the way it is, by, by the plumbing code. But if you can get by, if you only got 11 or 12, you're.
Okay, I think I got what you said.
So you're suggesting, you're saying that, that hookups to the city, new hookups to the city might not be necessary?
Correct.
Yeah. That's what we talked about.
I don't know if the city council will go for that, but that's what I think. And I think SDC fees are another issue that we can make a recommendation.
And we're not gonna put this in, put SCD.
No, I don't want to go there.
No.
If they have separate meters, if they have.
That's up to the, that's up to the landlord.
That's another $10,000.
For the meters.
So if we're trying to have affordable housing and you have an additional sewer and additional water.
10.
You mean the additional hookups?
I'm talking about meter.
Just the meter.
The meter is gonna charge, they're gonna charge you $10,000 to put a meter in, a water meter.
I don't think so. The irrigation.
Let's not talk about that. That's a, that's a separate.
A new service, a separate meter, it's gonna be.
No, not a new service, just a meter, the waters.
Like you suggested now and move on.
That's my suggestion.
Okay.
Are we starting from?
We're on page, we're looking at page five.
But we're not considering any questions on the previous page?
Page 15, number I, I just, I just, page 15, I, an ADU shall obtain separate connections to the main.
Now, the point is, these ADU things have to be simple enough that Joseph and the city manager or Joseph and I or the three of us can rule on those without discretion. Because otherwise they have to come to you. The idea was to try to write these so that we can go down with the checkmark. And so that's what we're trying to do. So let's go back to page five. So then we have home occupation. We, we have conditions for it. I passed them out to you in a separate pass out that starts, has my handwriting up at the top, it says definitions. You got them tonight? All of you have them, 1704030.
I don't know where mine are.
There it is.
Can use that one. So.
Great.
The point, I thought I had one too.
Sorry, Noah.
That's okay. Anyway, so we have this for home occupations and we have used it and we have done it as an administrative thing. And we're gonna have to do that because something that the state is requiring, I think it's this family childcare, is permitted. That's number five, number six with a checkmark by it, permitted in all dwellings in residential and commercial zones as a home occupation. That's the state's wording. So we need to take these home occupation rules, that's the only things that we have a say-so about. And the state wants us to have that say-so. Want us to have it as an outright use. So we have to take these and we have to make that form that, again, a checkoff form that says, after you do all these things, we're done, the state's gonna be in charge of the Make sense to everybody? Okay.
That's great.
So those, that's why those notes are on there and that's why these handouts are done. Then, just keep going on to page six. Then we have to start looking.
Yes.
At the different, you go to the bottom of page five, you start seeing all these things that I believe I have moved, well, recreational vehicle is a conditional use now because we have a bunch of requirements in addition to the state building codes. And so we have that in here too, but we're not gonna look at it separately. Okay, then we go to page six. And at the top, we have a couple of other things that we've talked about. Gone through planned unit development rules and cottage residential. Now we're in conditional use permits.
Right.
So this is gonna come to you guys. So we still have to go through cottage residential. We haven't done that yet as a group, but.
Didn't we go through that?
Well, we had it last time, but we never got to it.
So I guess my question is, do we want to have cottage residential in the R1 zone?
That's, that's the question.
That's my concern.
So that's the question of whether you want planned unit develop, well, planned unit development is good in there because you have, planned unit development's gonna do all kinds of subdivisions and stuff like that. And a lot of that R1 is on bluffs and hills and stuff like that where planned unit development is a good thing to have because then they could do a subdivision and they don't have to do it in all these little lots. They could have some areas behind common areas or, but these are for more expensive houses. Because you don't start doing common areas and stuff like that in this community with our small subdivisions if you're trying to make them affordable. Because that means they have homeowners associations and all kinds of things. So cottage residential may not be what you want in here. You may want to leave planned unit development and separate out, you know, you don't have to have cottage residential hand in hand.
Right.
As with every time you have a planned unit.
But is cottage residential a planned unit development?
Well, it could be a planned unit development or it could be a small, a subdivision with small lots where we're going to define that as 900 square foot houses and it would be a different sized lots. And I don't know if that fits with the R1 either. But, but it does fit with the R2.
Yeah, R2, yeah.
Because R2 has multiple house, family housing.
Right.
Which we're now calling multifamily housing, I believe.
Yes, multi.
Or, no, no, I'm taking out, I'm taking out family because the state says we shouldn't be using family anymore, we should be using household. And yet they give us these words to use in here that's all about single family, duplex, two-family. If we're not gonna call them families, we need to call them households. I mean, I want to be consistent. So that's why we have this new terminology, single household. I'm sure somebody else has done it before. But it seems to make more sense to me if we can't say family anymore. Yeah. And then you want to look at the other uses in the 2, R2, which is a little bit more lax. Definitely this would, should be able to accommodate cottage dwelling. Yes, number 12 on the next page, page seven. I've got it in there. I'm gonna put a question mark, just as you did, by whether you really want that in R1.
Right.
And you can look at your maps and see where R1 is and where R2 are, where they are. So then there's all these other things that have to go into R2. Let's see, there's changes. So then we have all these things like hospitals, churches and everything that have, that were previously like outright uses. Nobody likes that if a great big facility goes in and they don't have anything to say about it in a public hearing. So my intent in the way I was organizing this was if it's big, if it needs different accesses, if it's gonna mess up, you know, change a whole neighborhood by the way it's laid out and everything, it probably should come to the planning commission. So.
As a variance or such?
Just as a conditional use permit where they have to, you know, where the neighbors can say, well, you know, that access isn't good there because this happens right next to it or we can see where the accesses are gonna go. Joseph and I shouldn't be doing that in a staff review.
No.
Crystal, not having been at the last meeting, did we go over this in pretty much detail?
No.
Oh, are we going to be doing that today?
No, because we don't have time. But what I'm trying to do is show you how this works together and I want you to try to envision the different zones and what, what these are doing to them. So when you see these bold things in here, these are new, these are new proposals. So some of them are pretty logical, but they're not what we have now.
Well, I thought it flowed. I, I did, I was able to read through it and it did flow.
I don't know if it flowed, but that's the intent.
I had more questions about the numbers and some things that I thought might be missing from, say, the R2. I didn't see parks in there as part of an R2, things that can be in an R2 area.
Outright use.
Let's put that.
Outright use.
Pardon?
Outright use?
Yeah, yeah, that.
Would you like to see parks as an outright?
I, I would think so, yes. In an R2, do we even want it in an R1?
Do we have our parks in neighborhoods or do we have our parks in 8PF?
Yeah, so 8PF is specifically for parks and city facilities. So we have zoning specifically for those.
So we would, we would change the zone to 8PF or something, I guess, if we wanted to park, unless it was a planned unit development.
That's what I'm thinking. I've seen those before where they include a park in them. So in that case, I would think for both R1 and R2, it could be an included use.
It would come in with a planned unit development.
It would be private, you're talking about a private park.
Yeah.
City, on private property.
Well.
Yes, yes.
For, for the residents of the area.
Yes.
Well, that would be, that would just be part of the planned unit development. It wouldn't be a, it wouldn't.
But it would be allowed in those areas.
With, with a planned unit development or it could be in a subdivision.
I think, I think the idea, as I understand it, of a, of a, like a planned unit development is that you can, you don't have to chop it up into squares. You can kind of put houses closer together and then have a open area, which you could call a park. I think that's part of the flexibility.
I think that's a, I think that's a good point that you're making. I think that it's, then if we, if there was gonna be a city park, they would need to designate it 8PF, a new city park.
Oh, change the zoning for that spot?
Yeah.
And that, that happens, they do that.
I mean, they could.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be logical.
I'm fairly certain that that's how it would go because if you look at the map, you see little, I guess, holdouts in other zones that are the 8PF, it's the bright blue. So I'm guessing that if it's designated as a city park, then it automatically gets the 8PF zoning or that's part of the process of designation.
Wanted it to be a city park, they would have to do what they do with the roads if they wanted the city to accept it and design it out, take it to the city council and see if they would accept it and, you know.
Right now expenses, it would be really hard. I doubt, the city would go for that at this time.
But I mean, that, that's.
Would it, would it fall under, for example, on page five, C3, would it fall under public use facility under conditional use permit?
I would put it there if anybody came in and wanted.
So I did work in a few of those developments and you, they were small, little parks, clustered houses, streets behind the houses. So in the front, you'd have a sidewalk, a sidewalk, a house, streets behind, and then you had these little open spaces, but they were public. I mean, anybody from town, they weren't gated communities, so anybody could walk through the neighborhood and use the.
Yes, they do a lot of empty spaces.
I also had a question on, in the R1 and R2, that there's nothing in there that addresses storage, for instance, boats and crab traps.
Yeah, they can, those are accessory uses.
And where is that in here?
It says, let's see, it's under B at the top.
Which page?
At page five. It's on each zone.
So conditional?
So, well, no, right at the top, it has 1712010, residential, R1R, purpose of classification, and then B, uses permitted outright in an R1 zone, the following uses and their accessory uses are permitted outright.
So that's considered an accessory?
Garage or if you wanted to build an outbuilding.
Okay, and I guess the reason I bring it up is because we have that problem right now in the city is the storage of crab traps.
You're talking about just open storage on easements and just wherever?
Yeah. And so that's a concern.
Are they out of hand?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Hundred, hundred percent.
And there's more current.
It seems to be becoming more and more of an issue.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, what would you like? What do you think would be helpful? I know you have thought about it before, but I mean, in terms. I know you haven't thought about it before, but I mean, in terms of the code, but.
Yeah, as far as how to control that somehow, if it, if it, for, for instance, maybe the requirements is that it has to be in the backyard, or it has to be behind a fence, or something like that.
At the very least, not in the easement.
Certainly not in the easement, but that's another code, I would imagine, the easement code.
Joseph?
So I don't believe that that would really be housing codes. That would fall more under the nuisance, uh, nuisance codes. And I believe we already do have provisions in there, just the enforcement of them is a little questionable at this time.
Yes, but I still think that maybe there's a balance that needs to happen here between those codes and what is, because someone could come in here and look at this and figure that they can just use their entire property for some type of storage. And I think there should be some type of limit on that that is defined in R1 and R2 particularly. Are you familiar with anything like that at all, Crystal?
Um, Joseph's right. It's usually in a nuisance ordinance because.
Can you reference the nuisance ordinance in the housing ordinance?
But the nuisance is for the easements, I believe, right? Isn't that just for easements?
No, it can be applicable to, you know, private property. And.
But how would?
I don't want to go talk more about it because.
Well, that's the question. How do we enforce it? That's probably why they're all over town.
Yeah.
And other towns, too.
Yeah.
Terrific.
So you would have to be able to prove that a bunch of trailers and crab traps that cover a property are a nuisance? And how would you say that's a nuisance?
Yeah, it's, it's a huge issue.
To me, that's difficult to prove.
Supposed to be complaint driven at this point, is my understanding.
I think there's enough, I think there's enough teeth in our nuisance codes that if it was going to be enforced, it would, it, there, progress could be made. And I, I think that we're working on housing and I think we should stick with that. And, and not, uh, like, make it really complicated. Because I, because if we put it in the code and it's not followed, it's not going to follow it anyway.
Yeah, I, I just think it would be hard to prove nuisance on someone's private property. I can see it on easements and on public property, but I think it would be difficult, and is difficult.
It would be pretty hard in a zoning ordinance to, to prove, to have to late list out all the things that they could do on their, on their property besides structures and things.
And I pulled up the nuisance code. Most of these sections start with the sentence, no person responsible shall cause or permit on property owned or controlled by that person. So most of the sections from our nuisance code are specifically for property owned by someone, you know, by private individuals. And
Yeah, move on.
Uh, things listed here are refuse, abandoned or improper materials, furniture, household items, machinery, equipment, stoves, freezers, refrigerators, stripped or junked automobiles, other personal property which causes a fire hazard, offensive odor detriment to surrounding property, or there's a danger to persons, animals, or vehicles traveling upon the public way. Uh, that is just A, and this goes A through F, so.
That all of that occurs actually currently. Maybe you can look into it and see if other housing ordinances have provisions. No? It's not a housing thing?
It is.
It's not housing related?
You don't list everything you can do on your property. Property stuff is about structures and uses.
Uses.
We have to talk more about health and safety issues with derelict buildings and piles of stuff, and that's, that's a whole nother.
I mean, I'm not saying it's great. I'm not trying to encourage it. I'm just saying, I don't think we can do that.
I'd like to stick with the work you're, you're doing here and, and if, you know, maybe revisit that or try to understand that in another context. But we're scheduled to have our meeting end in five minutes, and I would like to just continue on a little bit, even past that five minutes, and see if what we can get done here.
So when you look at the R2 zone, you see things ramping up a little bit. You see, um, child, family, childcare home as an outright use, and then you get to the conditional uses. No, we don't have it in there, but, um, anyway, there's a whole bunch of stuff that we do have in there that we don't have in the R1, like healthcare facility. And we may not want these clinics there. I was, I think, I was trying to figure out whether you really want clinics going into the neighborhoods, or if you just want, we can define it like healthcare. Our code says right now, healthcare established, and that's in this same handout that has the home occupation on it. It just happens to be on there. Healthcare established means an establishment which provides sleeping and eating facilities to persons receiving medical, obstetric, obstetrical, or surgical care and nursing services on a continuous basis. So I don't know if I like the words healthcare established, but I, we could say healthcare facility and put that throughout our code because we have about three different definitions in the code.
I think it's reasonable to have it in R2 if it's a conditional use.
Yes, but what about clinics? Clinics are in a place like Fort Orford normally to one or two people operating them. I mean, the Northland Medical Center is a big one, but they operate these little ones all up and down the coast right now.
It seems more, it seems more like a commercial use?
I was thinking that, and I think we could take it out and we could leave in, these things, or we can just define the size building that's going in for the healthcare facilities of, you know.
I mean, if it was.
Come to that later in this. We've got it in.
If it was in a residential home, I don't know, but then there's, there's, that creates all kinds of parking issues in the residential, you know?
Well, they're making us have some of these things. The state requires residential care home. You'll see it.
Right, residential care home, yeah. But a healthcare facility where people are coming and going with appointments all day long.
Yeah, that's a little different.
Yeah, that is different.
I think it should go.
Yeah, I think so, too.
It should go where?
Away.
Away, like.
Going to C, into 4C.
You don't want a healthcare facility in, okay, R2. That's fine with me. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no.
I think so.
Okay, so I'm just going to cross it out for now.
People come and go, yeah, it's a, it's a business.
Appointments all day. I mean, residential care facility, you have people living there.
Residential, is that true for residential care facilities, too?
Um, I think that's different.
When they get bigger?
If they live there.
Oh, they have residential care home, which is a state thing.
Right, so like the one on Lakeshore, for example?
Johns?
We already, pardon me?
There's one on Lakeshore. It's, it's a home. It's like, I don't know what else.
Elder care, isn't it?
It's elder care, yeah.
Where people.
But it doesn't have people.
And that someone's there.
People aren't coming and going all day long.
We, we don't want the bigger ones, is what you're saying, just the household size.
Well, I think the issue is more people coming and going all day for appointments, you know, in and out, in and out, in and out. Residential care facility people live there permanently and they're likely not driving.
So you want to split these up?
Joseph has his hands up.
Yes, I think so.
Well, that's a state.
So I don't know if it's significant or not. I just looked up the definitions in our code and we actually have a distinction between a residential care facility and a residential care home.
Yeah.
Oh.
Those are state requirements. Read it.
Okay. Residential care facility means a residential care facility, residential training facility, or residential treatment facility is defined in ORS 443 dot 400, licensed by Oregon Department of Human Services that provides residential care alone or in conjunction with treatment or training or a combination thereof for six to 15 individuals who need not be treated to each other or to any other resident of the facility. Who need not be related to each other or anyone else at the facility. And then a residential care home basically has the same definition, uh, just with five or fewer instead of six to 15.
So that's a group, that's a group home.
So that would be residential care home. We've got that.
Residential care home is.
Now, and we put it, we left it on page six.
So the first, the def, the difference between the two are the amount of, number of people?
Yes.
Yeah.
But the state oversees them both.
Right.
Yeah, we've got it already.
I don't. So a larger one would have to be huge.
Yeah. So can we have the smaller one be an outright use? Or what's a conditional use? A conditional use in the R2?
No, it's an outright use.
A small.
The home.
The home.
The home is an outright use. And then, so.
The residential care facility.
Six to 15.
We don't have to have it in.
In the R2.
R2 if we don't want. We have to have it in the 4C.
4C makes more sense.
I feel like it doesn't make sense in the R2.
If it's huge, yeah. If it's, if it's large, it's a, it's.
And the state requires that.
Yeah.
Right.
We don't have a say. I mean, they would let us put it in the residential, I think, but that's not there.
Yeah, no.
Okay. Then wait, let's just kind of keep going.
Do we need a motion to extend the meeting?
Okay, I would entertain a motion to extend the meeting.
Commissioner, ahead, I move to extend the meeting.
For how long?
Until 8:00 PM.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Thielenz, yes. Commissioner Lovendall? Commissioner.
Sorry, yes, I have things to do, too, I know.
Commissioner Boyson?
I seconded it.
Sorry, Commissioner Boyson, this is your first meeting and I'm already extending it.
The meeting is.
There's going to be a fine for the chair.
I think we should just spend a meeting on this sometime, you know?
Uh, yeah.
We're getting very.
I thought we were going to last.
I think going too fast sometimes can cause some problems for us because sometimes some of us need a chance, need to digest it, and we end up making.
And I have trouble explaining all this stuff because honestly, I can't remember it all. How can you remember all this stuff when the state changes the rules?
Right.
Every day.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got 28 minutes. Let's go.
Joseph has his hand up. Joseph has his hand up.
So I think we got that settled.
Joseph's got a.
One real quick thing, was that 5-0 or 4-1? Two, did we get five yeses or four yeses and one no?
Five yeses.
All the yeses.
Thank you.
Okay, let's look at the 4C, page seven. So now we have other things happening. 4C, for your information, um, what's your name? I forgot your name.
Jerry.
Jerry, yes.
Tom and Jerry.
I'm reading.
Well, the 4C is our most open zone, and it allows almost everything. And that hasn't been a problem for Fort Orford, and in fact, larger cities are trying to find a way to make some mixed use zones just like this. So I think we're in good shape, but we do have a few cleanup things, as you can see.
So when, are we going to be coming back at another meeting to clean up things?
Well, we're cleaning up right now.
Okay, because I would say on B, we should add lighting. Shouldn't we have our, we, we have that.
On B?
Operation does not create a nuisance because of odor, noise, dust, smoke, or gas. B under commercial zone.
At the bottom.
Page seven. And shouldn't it fall under our
Uses permitted outright in a 4C zone.
Seven. Odor, low, no, smoke or gas.
Yes, yes.
Should say lighting because this is commercial buildings. We're trying to.
Yep.
Well.
That should be covered under our.
I guess we could add lighting.
Yeah, add it.
Yeah, because we have.
To mention.
Put it in there, though, that's good.
Just add it. Okay, then, um, changed like household accessory units, um, okay, manufactured home. Keep going to page eight. On 10, I, number 10, tire retreading. Nobody knows what vulcanizing is and they never have.
That should be a conditional use, I think.
Tire retreading should, in the commercial zone?
It should not be outright. It should be, uh, conditional use.
You guys agree with that?
Sure.
Yes.
Or do you want it in the, an industrial zone or what? Okay.
Sounds toxic, whatever it is.
So you want tire retreading? Do you want vulcanizing?
What is, I don't understand what that is.
I don't even think we even need to have that.
Yeah, tire retreading or vulcanizing.
Taking out vulcanizing.
Well, paint has a lot of odor to it, so I think that should be under conditional use permit. So number nine talks about plumbing, electrical, or paint contractor's storage repair or sales. That paint is always associated with odors.
Well, this, we're talking about like, um, Kuz curry supply, like, uh, you know, hardware store would fall under this, I think.
A paint contractors' storage mostly don't happen downtown.
They're mixing paint like in cans and machines, but not necessarily.
This would be, uh, maybe we don't want.
So the fire we just had was caused by someone mixing paint.
No, that, I don't, that was, that was just hearsay. I don't.
I don't even know why that's in there with plumbing and electrical.
The prevailing theory is that's not actually what happened.
Haven't heard it.
Yeah.
I don't.
Yeah.
So what do you want?
It was a different kind of explosion.
I say we scratch tire retreading.
Yeah, scratch it.
Oh, oh, you don't even want tire retreading anywhere?
Why state, nobody.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Non-starter.
Okay, I'm taking it off.
And how about noise from machine shop? There's no noise in a machine.
Well, wait, um, all this stuff is on, in our code right now. Has it been a problem? Is it a problem? I mean, we don't need new, we don't need to create new problems.
Okay.
I mean, that's all, that's what.
Where, where is, um.
These are not housing.
Car dealership. Isn't it somewhere? I thought it was an outright use.
It should be.
Car.
Sales.
Retail establishment.
Where?
Number five.
Number, that, it falls under retail?
Well, it would be.
Retailer service establishment.
Tailor service, yeah.
And then automobile service station, which.
Six is automobile service station.
Yeah, well, there was recently an issue.
Sorry, um, number seven is actually explicit, uh, machinery, farm equipment, marine or automotive sales.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. Oh, here it is, yeah. So there was recently an issue with, with a property on the highway where there was, um, the owner's been allowing people to sell vehicles, but somebody wanted to sell more than five. I think requires a permit from the DMV. Is this something, yeah.
I don't know.
I mean, something that should be a conditional use.
You shouldn't be even looking at this. I mean, basically, these are not housing issues.
I know, yeah. It's just, it's like we have an, we have an opportunity to improve the code, so I'm just.
But we'll never get it done.
Come, come up with language or something and present it at the next meeting.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm just, I'm like, I can't even, I can't even begin to do what I'm supposed to do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, um, Joseph, there's some new things. Number 16, family childcare limited to 12 children. And again, this is all up in arms because one state publication that just came out says 16, and one law that just came out says 12, so I don't know.
So that's a state law, 12 children?
Yes, well, 12 or 16, depending on what they're saying that day.
Well, let's put it in 12.
I just have a question mark by it. I have to look it up. Okay, I mean, I have to look up one more time.
It's childcare, right?
Childcare center. It's, um, it has a state review as part of it.
Okay.
But, and it has to be, and it has to be certified. And that's in there.
I don't think there's 12 children in all of Fort Orford.
There are. We would hope there is. Okay, then we go to conditional uses. Then we have the usual suspects that we've been putting in there. We have multi-family house, multi-household dwelling. Residential care facility.
Why, why are we including single household and manufactured dwelling in an industrial zone?
They go in all.
We're not even in the industrial zone yet.
On conditional use.
On, are you on page eight?
Oh, I was on nine.
Sorry, but, but we do have some new uses in there, like, well, we have the new uses in there because we had things they're supposed to be following, but we don't have any procedure because they're in outright uses. In other words, like residential care facility. If we had that in, I'm, I can't remember if that was in a. If we had that in, I can't remember if that was in a, in the commercial already, or if it was always a conditional use, I think it might have been, but.
Yeah, I was, I was ahead of myself here.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna have them with things that, in other words, if you want to have them do landscape, landscaping around it and different things, you have to have a procedure for doing that.
It doesn't have to be complicated, it can be a simple CUP. But, but, but they should check in with us, that's basically it.
So.
For me.
Then you go to the industrial, that's where you were.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, which one are you looking at?
Well, one and two, why would you want single-family housing?
Well, I don't know, Port Orford's always wanted that. It's full, it's full of it.
Yeah.
For, in, in industrial zone.
It's not anything new. I'm not saying it's wrong or right, I'm just saying, like.
It already exists.
For people to live.
It already exists in the code.
It already exists, you can see, the only thing I've done is changed the name a little bit.
Right.
Single household instead of single family.
If someone chooses to live there, or build there.
And we don't have the same kind of industrial we used to have, like the big nails and stuff like that.
No.
Not anymore.
To expand on that, remember that we're kind of going from the most to the least restrictive zones, so if it's allowed in a less, or in a more restrictive zone, then implicitly it should sort of be allowed in a more restrictive zone.
I, I can understand that, and I think I like the idea of opening up those into other zones, but for some reason, industrial, that whole concept of the type of industry go in there, can possibly be compatible with a residential care home. I mean, I understand that there may be things existing there, but what happens when you, in the same zone, maybe near the same properties, you want to install or build a truck servicing building, and then right next door to a single-family home?
I think that assumes when they choose to live in the industrial zone.
People live right next to I-5 or right next to 101, it's just.
Or right next to airports.
Airports.
Okay.
It's a choice.
Also, I'd like to point out, we have one little section of industrial zoning in the, yeah, I don't, I think that one lot is, to build a.
Five I.
Home.
All right, let's move on, folks.
Hey, you're on page ten.
Page ten.
Then move.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Are you okay with cottage residential?
And we're crossing off twelve on the industrial.
Tire retreading.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. You, you don't want cottage residential?
Oh, no, I thought you were talking about overall, I don't want it in R1.
You want it in five?
Sure.
High industrial?
Sure.
I think so.
Absolutely.
What's that? Cottage residential.
In industrial, is it conditional use?
In other words, we're trying to do some small, inexpensive homes.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right.
Without a conditional use permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
It would have a conditional use permit.
No, it's an outright use.
So, oh.
Cottage, yeah, it's under conditional.
Yeah, you want it as an outright use, correct? What you were saying?
It's not, we don't have it now.
Right. So we're moving it to.
We're, we're, we're defining where we want to have.
It's conditional use, because we want them to run the plans by us, for, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, then we have hotel and motel before they could just go build them, but considering that we have residential in our commercial and industrial zones, we might want to be letting people know when something big is going on.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah.
So that's why you find all these things, and it probably, it probably won't be hospital, it'll probably be healthcare facility and how we define it or something. Okay.
And the residential care facility is the larger of those two, right?
Yes, and that is, that is reviewed by the state, too. And then, we go to some specialty zones that don't have too much changes. They use picnicking, you guys talked, your, the planning commission talked about last year a lot. So I put it in there again, and then on page eleven, a motel and hotel in the seven MA, that's the port. Facility, if they wanted it down in the port area or on some of the portland, they could.
Be a great idea.
And then we go to Shoreland, there's only, nothing's really changed here, just a little few words. Now, the Battle Rock one is, I think, another one where we want to pay special attention, because.
Yeah.
The Battle Rock zone is set up to have close commercial, if you want it, but it also allows a lot of other things. It starts to be the question of whether you want the Battle Rock zone to have things like.
RV parking?
Well, RV parking, we don't have it.
Emergency care facilities, lighting.
I, nobody ever wanted it in there, I don't think, and I don't think it's proposed in there, but cottage residential, for example.
Well, and it says encourage pedestrian-friendly tourist commercial uses, and so some of these.
Yeah.
Uses really don't fit in, a fire station, I wouldn't want to see in that.
Which one?
Number eleven, under B, outright uses under. Under Battle Rock, right?
Battle Rock, number eleven.
Page twelve.
So number eleven, fire station, I don't think we'd, we want a fire station in a tourist area?
No. Well, we have an auto repair shop in that, right next across from the post office.
What's existing, yes, but then.
I'm not saying we do, I, I think fire stations are, I've seen some benign-looking fire stations.
And like, well, I'm just saying that doesn't correlate, correspond to the language we've used. Mixed-use zone that encourages pedestrian activity, tourist, commercial, and tourist facilities in a compact area, it being a compact area. So, those are the types of facilities that I don't think fall under that description.
What do, what do you guys think, the rest of you, fire station, should we take that out?
Or light manufacturing, why would we have light manufacturing in that one?
Well, because that's a pretty, light manufacturing is probably pretty benign.
Crafts.
Craft stuff.
I'm, I'm okay with a fire station.
I wonder if we have a definition.
Does that area include, like, the old Pitch's Tavern and the flower shop, etc.?
The ten MU is the purple there.
Actually, I think that anything questionable should be moved into conditional use.
Right.
Sure.
Yeah.
You know, I could.
Fire station.
Might want to be conditional use, because there's a lot of residential in the ten MU, I'm thinking of Abuse Street, and, you know, there are a lot of single-family homes.
Oh, yeah.
That should be some, maybe that should be a conditional use, because people may not.
Which should be a conditional use?
Yeah, a fire station.
Fire station.
Okay, we're, let's see, I'm back to, where is it?
Eleven.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we'll move that down to.
Fire station down.
To conditional use.
I'm just thinking, because it's such a small area, we're talking to.
What is light manufacturing? Is that actually manufacturing lights, or manufacturing small things, or what is?
I'm gonna look at light and see if we have a definition.
Yeah. Is that just the square footage?
We're having a homonym issue, yeah.
Maybe like a cabinet shop or something?
Yeah.
I mean, those are things that you'd like to see, manufacturing, we don't even have a definition.
Hmm.
So.
Okay.
Maybe we take it out?
Or just.
You might, you might, okay, oh, here it is, it's under manufacture, light or light manufacturer. Means the production or manufacture of small-scale goods, such as crafts, electronic equipment, bakery products, printing and binderies, furniture, and similar goods.
Sure.
Yeah.
Bakery.
Like a shop?
Yeah.
Like a shop.
Okay, that makes sense.
Glad we have a definition.
Yeah, Joseph.
Perhaps we could switch it, so it doesn't say light manufacturing.
Yeah, maybe we could put the definitions in there.
Electrical lighting, def.
Yeah.
For it, so maybe, yeah, that's what I read it as, so I was thinking, like, it was like.
That's a very esoteric use.
Well, I was thinking more.
You're new to this game.
Like, it was for Christmas display, extensive lighting displays, but.
Light manufacture.
No, it does, it does read that way.
I'm just gonna read, I'm gonna call it light manufacturer.
And that would fit.
Light manufacturer.
Or manufactured light.
Small-scale manufacturing, yeah.
Yeah, could you put maybe a couple examples in parentheses, like EG, comma?
Well, it is in the definition.
It is, but, yeah, I mean, just for clarity, for the sake of clarity.
I also wouldn't, would rather see emergency care facilities under conditional use permit, too.
Which one, residential?
Eight.
Oh, emergency care facilities, medical and dental clinic.
Medical and dental clinic.
Well, they don't all go together, do they?
No, but if we put them all then, under conditional use, again.
That would be like a quick, like the, they're having now, quick places.
Urgent care.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That also would be more traffic and more, so.
You want urgent care facilities.
I would.
Under conditional use, but not medical or dental clinic, thanks, those are good, aren't they?
Well, just because they're good, they might need to have conditional use.
Well, I mean, I think they should be separated, and my question is.
Oh, okay.
Where do you want them?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I just. They shouldn't be with the emergency care facilities, they're not the same thing.
No, emergency care facility.
I think, I think conditional use for both of, for all of them, because of the parking issue specifically.
And you could have ambulances going back and forth.
I don't know about that, I mean, a dental clinic.
But how does that relate to, again, I keep going back to the description of what we want that area to be.
It doesn't really, there's, there's no really cor, the ten MU is, does not realize the vision of the 2006 Visioning Document. It just doesn't, it hasn't, there's no parking restrictions, the setbacks are really small, it's, yeah, so.
I don't, I don't think a medical or dental clinic is any different than a.
Well, it's the part, the issue is it's the, it's a parking, so if it's a conditional use permit, then they have to demonstrate, we can make a condition that they need to have ample parking, right?
We can't, there's no parking in ten MU, there's no parking in commercial zones, they.
We don't have any parking regulations, the city council has never wanted them.
The city council doesn't want them.
We took them to them in the past, two or three times.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not, they, they were a different city council.
Right.
Always changing.
I think we should stick with emergency care facility, conditional use.
Okay.
The others are just, you go in, you do your thing.
Let's keep going.
Let's keep going, we've got ten minutes.
Okay, so, then we're on page thirteen. I think that these, I don't know, I don't even want to see.
Page thirteen?
Okay.
Wait, skip, what are we skipping?
Well, we have these large, never mind, it's just another thing that would take hours.
I, I thought this made sense, these next thirteen and fourteen, I, I thought they made sense, Crystal, I see what you're trying to do. I had some questions on fifteen, but.
Okay, let's go there, well, number fourteen, that's a state thing, we're doing what the state tells us. So, they told us to get rid of all those requirements on page thirteen.
Okay.
For prefabricated manufactured homes, they told us to have the one that we're putting in there.
Okay.
And then we're done with that, then we go to other supplementary provisions, and we get to natural hazards overlay. I'm sorry, that's always been that, like, this nine-page supplementary thing, and it should be its own chapter, so this is the time to do it. So, we should change that chapter, and, it should be chapter seventeen twenty-two.
Move rename and move to seventeen twenty-two.
Then we have room for these other things.
What page are you, what page are we on?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Fourteen.
Okay.
Then there's more supplementary provisions.
Six minutes.
Three dwelling units, we already went through, kind of today, and then we get to another section.
Okay, so, maybe we should tackle planned unit developments next time?
We already, we've already tackled that three times.
Okay, like, in previous meetings?
Yeah.
So this, you're just adding?
I'm not saying that it's perfect, but I'm saying, like.
I, I suggest that things we've looked at, in fact, all these, we should look, do our, just look at them, and if we have a question on a particular point, make a note of it, and.
Yeah, I had a couple.
And talk about it.
I, I wondered on the ADUs, I didn't see attics, that, it says.
I think we've discussed that.
Did you?
Yeah.
Where is it?
I don't think I was there, is that's why?
Well.
It's up to the Universal Building Code, what, what is livable space?
Okay, oh, okay.
And we have that in.
Doesn't matter, it's UBC.
Yeah, because if somebody wants to propose it.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And they'll let them go, they can do it, yeah.
All right, I think we should stop, because the, I think we've gone through all the rest a couple times.
That, it doesn't mean it's perfect, but, it's a good stopping.
Well, there'll be, yeah, I mean, there'll be multiple readings and.
And there's gonna be more stuff.
Yeah.
So, we haven't, this isn't set in stone.
No.
This is everything.
I still have an issue with the residential R1 and the different.
Well, I think we were gonna change what you suggested, but we might change it there, is what you're saying.
Take out the cottage residential.
I think I, we were gonna do that.
Okay.
I think I crossed this out, because I agreed with you and I heard you. I just wanted to ask you guys, would you want it there or not?
Planned unit is another.
We have another order of business, can we move on?
Yep.
I would like to.
You're the chair.
At this point, move on to other business, and the first other business I'd like to do is to elect a vice chair of our commission.
Commissioner Head, I would like to nominate Sarah, Commissioner Lovendall, to be the co-chair of the planning commission.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Sarah can run a meeting, I've seen it.
Commissioner Boyson? Commissioner Head?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovendall?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Thielenz, yes, okay, we did that. City? Planning clearance approved last meeting.
There has been one, there is a house on Twentieth Street that is being renovated, Crystal and I brought it up a little bit at the last meeting, it's the one that had some wonky stuff going on with the setbacks and the property lines, and it's just, they aren't going to exacerbate any of the underlying issues, and they're going to work to correct some of the more egregious issues that we're seeing in their, in their documentation.
And they didn't cause them, and nobody recently caused them, they're.
It's a house.
Baked into the.
It, it was a house that I think went up before the planning codes were even a thing, so.
Is that the one just over here?
I believe so.
The one that just sold and just being ripped apart?
Right now, they just tore it all out, which it needed, I think.
But we had to decide, as always, whether we're going to make them go back and fix stuff.
I'm not done yet, I'm just trying to get.
What was the determination?
We're gonna move off that topic, go ahead, whatever.
What was the determination about whether they had to go back and rectify?
We just won't let them exacerbate the problem.
Oh, I see, okay.
Because otherwise, we just, nobody wants to have the houses.
Yeah, got it.
And they're actually working to correct part of the issues that were there, it's just, we didn't want them to have to fix everything to make the house livable again.
Right.
So.